So, welcome everybody to the January 11th Borough Council Meeting. This meeting is being recorded for borough purposes. Is there anybody else recording this meeting at this time? Okay. Doreen, you want to go start with the role?
Okay.
Suzanne Touch? Here. Pete Merkel?
Here.
Jim Meals?
Here.
Mark is not with us at the moment. Ralph Touch?
Here.
Colin Boyer?
I'm here.
John Rothenberger?
I'm here.
Has Tammy Gore joined the meeting yet?
Not yet.
Andy George?
I'm here.
Chris Young?
Here.
Craig Conrad?
Here.
Ryan Kern here from BIA?
No, Joe Hoffman is representing BIA today.
That's okay. And that would be everybody on my list. Okay, it um...
We also have representing Arrow for our water bids and actually point of record here, we can, I will change the agenda to include them in the check in the roll call. My error for not putting them in here. We have Brad Smith, we have Ed Overberger, and Doug Kopp.
Evening.
Hey, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Phone number is 0547. Is that that one?
I don't know.
Yes, it is.
I didn't see. I admitted him. Sorry about that.
I did. I put him in.
Oh, yes. Let's, yeah. So, why don't we go forward with the 2021 appointments then?
So, I'll make the motion to approve Kazlof Stout and
it's George.
and Attorney George as solicitors for the borough. Do we have to do them one by one, right? Do we have to do them one by one, or do you want them all together?
Put them all together.
Good. And BIA is the borough engineer, and Arrow is the water sewer engineer, and Herbine and Company is the auditors, and the Rec Board members to renew the terms of the Rec Board members, Janice Delay and Suzanne Touch, and the planning commission for Jim Meals to renew his term.
You're making the motion.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Ralph made the motion, right?
Correct.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Pete. Do we have any further discussion? Doreen, if you wouldn't mind taking the role then, please? I'll be fine. Suzanne Touch? Agreed. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes, but I'm abstaining from the Rec Board member.
Right. And actually, John, I was just about to do that. I need to abstain for the Rec Board member as to myself, not as to Janice Delay.
Yeah, if I want to qualify that, it's, I'm going to abstain from the Janice Delay.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Does Jim need to do the same for the final commission?
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Doesn't change anything, does it?
Oh, I got another typo there. Jimmy's eating rather than Jimmy being his name. Sorry about that, Jim.
That's okay.
Spell check's only so good.
On behalf of Kazlof Stout, thank you very much for the appointment. It's very much appreciated. It's a pleasure to work with the borough.
We love having you, Andy. Your great expertise and direction. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Suzanne, Steve has come on board now.
Excellent. Then we should go back to Steve if he's on deck to give us his police report if he has the opportunity.
Steve, you on?
Yes, I am on. Let me see. There we go. I'm here. It's really me. It's not a clone. All right, everybody. Good evening. I have, I just emailed out probably within the last half hour or so the police report for December. So, council should have it all in your inboxes. Couple of things. In the area locally throughout the month of December, we only got two COVID-related complaints. One was for somebody not wearing a mask in Boyers that was gone and over with before we got there. Another, another one was somebody concerned about indoor dining at Oz Goods, but they were actually outside at the time. It was before everything was canceled. So, no, no issues, no issues with any of that kind of stuff. Here in town, we did respond to a, some things of note. Responded to 12-year-old male with thoughts of self-harm at the middle school. He was taken into hospital without incident for an evaluation bank and flipped onto its side. Investigation determined it was likely winter conditions, maybe driving skills, but there wasn't any evidence to indicate any kind of reckless or erratic driving. We did have, in the town, we had reports of some kids who were running around pulling on door handles and had some minor things taken from vehicle interiors. We also had a report of an unauthorized use of a motor vehicle, and that involved, that was actually taken as a vehicle of a family member, and it was taken by a 13-year-old and 14-year-old boy and girl, Bonnie and Clyde. They ran down to Muhlenberg for McDonald's and came back. Of course, they stopped to get some money out using the Mac, the ATM card that was in the car. The same culprits actually stole a car in the borough around that same timeframe. The owner reported the car stolen to us, and then later on actually saw the car, gave us its last known direction of travel. Police were able to find people who match a description and then ultimately locate where they dumped the car. The kids admitted to what they had done, and they are facing the appropriate prosecution. On the personnel side of the house, as you know, I asked last month, but Officer Arnt is successfully completed her probationary period and is coming along fine. Officer Zerbitavage, Zebra Tavage, began filling shifts in the month of December. We also have another part-time officer that we, that I asked for conditional approval to hire. All of his medical stuff came back fine. Steven Beckacy, he's going to be coming in tomorrow to qualify and go through all the onboarding paperwork, and the mayor's going to stop by later in the evenings. Officer Ruiz got a letter sent directly to her and one to me from a Ruskin Manor Township resident for helping the resident locate her lost dog during a, so they were extremely appreciative of that and with the service they had gotten from us. And we also, we were talking amongst ourselves about trying to do something for people in the area. It just so happens that right after that conversation, within a day or so, kind of dropped out of the sky. I was messaged by somebody who was looking for a Toys for Tots type of event here in our area. Come to find out, there was a single mother with three teenage kids who basically were, was telling her kids that she's going to have to postpone Christmas for a while. So, we actually took up a collection in the department. After we verified it was a true story, of course, and ultimately on Christmas Eve, a couple officers swung by the house and dropped off several gift baskets and a bunch of groceries. So, that was a good deed done. And we also had two officers support. Most of the Toys for Tots events in the area and ones that we had planned that were sponsored by like Crime Alert Burke's and stuff had been canceled. There was still one that was being put on by Central Burke's down in the Target and Exeter area, and they were looking for officers to assist. And it was actually the same day. So, we were able to send Officer Arnt and Ruiz down there to assist in that event. Equipment-wise, working on placing an ammo order. So, we have it in time for spring qualification. The MVR install in the Tahoe had to be delayed again because there was a different missing part that wasn't discovered until the installer was here on location. We since got that part. We're working to fit ourselves into the schedule. We, I spoke with the borough manager with the new vehicle we're purchasing. I was looking around for radio equipment to purchase, and I had had a line and opportunity to purchase two mobile radios for vehicles from Muhlenberg Township who downsized their fleet, substantial savings. We would have bought new radios. It would have been in the area of about $7,000, $8,000 each. We got these, we got these radios for $3,000 apiece. So, they just approved that sale back on the 21st, at their 21st supervisors' meeting. So, I'll be reaching out to them to make the arrangements to pick those up as things go. Also, I don't know if you know, but when we, when we had the, the new radios that were purchased a few years ago, they were purchased through a contract that Berks County had engineered. And what that, and what that did for us was, there was a substantial savings. I think it was maybe 40% off or something of any kind of radios or radio equipment when we purchased those. That sweet deal contract actually sunsetted on December 31st. But the beginning of December, I was able to place an order for some, some spare batteries. They only last a few years. We had, during the course of this, we had to, we had to get it, we resupply once. So, a couple of them are starting to go again. So, I ordered a handful of batteries and some other accessories so I could take advantage of that 40% discount on that old contract. Projected issues, we're starting to schedule each other, schedule the officers for their annual mandatory in-service training. That is, looks like it's going to be held in person again at the Redding Police Academy. So, we're starting to schedule that for next month. We'll start sending officers. First aid and CPR recertification for our guys is, is scheduled for the first week of February, and I'm working on putting together a comprehensive end-of-year report. So, I hope to have that out for you guys definitely before February's meeting, hopefully by the end of this month. And also today and tomorrow, just in consideration of operations and the current climate, I'm actually attending a force science de-escalation instructor training class that's being held today and tomorrow. And so, I'm going through that class now so I can institute that training into our curriculum here for the officers so we can respond better to incidents. What I'm probably going to end up doing, Officer Gallo serves as our main FTO, so I'm probably going to put him through the instructor course, the same instructor course, along with Sergeant Olshaver, because he and I are the primary firearms instructors. We can incorporate some of this, some of these de-escalation concepts. We already do, but at a greater scale while we're doing our range work to get the most benefit out of how we're presenting the material. And I also reserved, I was trying to reserve slots for myself and Sergeant Olshaver to attend the Force Science Institute for the Use of Force certification so we could better teach our officers and then be able to investigate and articulate why and how we use appropriate levels of force. So, I had to wait. I was waiting until the start of the year so I could schedule that for funding issues. And the first class that was available, must be a pretty hot topic, wasn't until October. So, I actually have a schedule to attend that class in October. Pending any questions, that's what I've got.
Steve, did you mention, I had to step out just for a second, the COVID vaccines?
Oh, no, I didn't. There was a, a variety of things that sort of cascaded. There were, there were three different options. Ultimately, it came out as of this morning for officers to get in line, if you will, to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. I forwarded that information out. One of them was from Lehigh Valley Health Network. One was from St. Luke's. Naturally, those two are both up in Lehigh County. And also, there was something through Penn State, St. Joe's. That's at a lot smaller scale at this point, though. I had one officer who called and said he got in, and I had one officer who called and said they had some issues. So, I actually have an appointment for the first one up in Lehigh on Friday, and the other officers are going through it as their schedules allow.
Steve, it's Pete.
Yes.
Down the line on our agenda is the new traffic signal.
Yeah, well, as soon as you said your name, Pete, I was going to, to remind you to mention that.
You knew what it was going to be about, right? Okay.
Yes, I did.
Do you want to?
So, I see that the, the council, I see that the borough office is getting some of the same complaints I am. Basically, there's a handful of people who think that it was a worthy endeavor, and there's a handful of people who think it was a stupid waste of money. And then there's a handful of people who are completely disregarding it, and a handful of people, especially the ones who live along South Richmond, that didn't have cars queued up there as frequently as they do now, and they're complaining. So, we have had officers watching the area. This first couple of weeks, we're kind of in a educational phase. So, unless somebody is really being unsafe, you know, pulling out in front of people and doing different things like that, going around, it's our intention to write a couple of warnings, try to get the word out that we're watching it, and we'll see how it progresses. Now, based upon some of the things that were seen initially, Mr. Young worked with PennDOT and Telco to try a couple of things. They worked on adjusting the timing at the lights, and they also worked on putting in a, some diffusers on the light at Richmond in Maine in order to not let people get confused as things went down there versus what's at the tracks.
Hey, Steve, this is Jim. I have a question. The radar, the speed sign that we put up, have we been getting any data, and what kind of things have you identified or areas that that are being looked at?
So, what I can tell you is, I have not had the opportunity to examine that as closely as I would like to. But the sets of data that I have seen, anybody who is traveling extremely fast is a one-off. We don't have a constant stream of people who are going 20 miles an hour over the speed limit. There are, there are a handful of people, as you would expect, different places. I can tell you, one thing that actually came in handy last month, the sign was actually on North Franklin Street, and I had a, I was investigating a crash that had occurred where a car was traveling southbound on Franklin towards Maine, and then there was another car that was pulling out from West Arch, hit that first car, caused it to spin and end up on the sidewalk. And naturally, the driver who pulled out from the stop sign said, oh, that guy was flying, so I didn't see him. And we actually, actually pulled the data from the sign because it was about a half a block away from the crash, and it showed that the car that was struck was going 42 miles an hour, I believe. So, so there wasn't any excessive speed involved in that. And then, like, the thing, the thing that we need to remember as well is, based upon vehicle code in Pennsylvania, speed, since we're not using radar, but we've got to use stopwatches and lines or inrad system, speeds where people are going, who are violating a speed limit, that where the posted speed limit is less than 55, they've got to be going at least 11 miles an hour over the speed limit for us to be able to cite them.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yep. Anybody else?
Does anybody else have anything for Steve? Well, nobody has any other questions for Steve, then. Steve, it looks like you are dismissed for this evening.
Okay. I will be here in the office for a little bit longer. If you need something, shoot me a text. I'm going to log off this and log on to Topten's meeting.
Thank you very much.
This is John. I got one more question. Do we need to do anything further with Officer Bakazee?
No, no, you got, you got, you guys conditionally approved his hiring last month, and he met the conditions that we needed, so we're good to go.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Got it.
Okay, then, moving on with the rest of our agenda. Chris, the next folks that I think we've got up are, our engineering report, please.
Yeah. So, Joe, do you want to go over Ryan's report, or are you going to wait for Ryan to come in, and you're just here in case you're needed?
I was here just in case I was needed, because I don't have that.
Okay. So, everybody was emailed Ryan's report. Ryan might join us around 7:30. He has another meeting. So, if he comes in, we can ask him at that point if there's anything. Joe, for, for those who aren't aware, is our codes specialist and inspection inspector. So, he was in in case there was any issues that would have come up for the borough codes type thing. So, we can skip to Arrow then, so if you're...
I have, I have a question about that. Tammy brought up the fact of exterior, hello?
Yes.
Go ahead, Pete.
Am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Exterior lighting and some of the lighting in a borough is very offensive, in my opinion. Do we, do we have a code that addresses this?
You're referring to, as an example, the, the old elementary school, the...
You bet.
Yeah.
You bet.
Well, I can tell you, yes, go ahead, Chris.
Just for point reference, on Vine Street, there's a building that they put new exterior lighting on, and there's been several complaints.
Gotcha. I would have to look it up, because I was not expecting to get that question.
Well, I know.
I can definitely find out.
Yeah, let me, let me rephrase. We have not, the borough has not received anything official complaint to forward to you. We've had knowledge of people that aren't happy with it. Let's put it that way. That's why you're not aware of it.
Gotcha.
Well, from what Tammy was saying, I thought I understood her to say that we have some rules in place to address this. I was not aware of that, but you're going to check into it, right, Joe?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm looking now as we do this, just to hopefully see I can find it by the end.
Well, it's not an emergency, but I, if we don't have such a thing, we, we need it.
I stepped away for a second. What are, what are we talking about? I'm, I'm hearing my name.
You wanted to make sure that the exterior lighting at the new apartments on Locust Street did not flood over the property, and
Yes.
you alluded to the fact that we have rules to govern that?
No, I don't think we do, and I think that's a problem. Where this came about was, I don't know if you've noticed, but at the Fleetwood Elementary School, the director there put those lights that look like 18-wheeler, like neighbors' houses.
I put my sunglasses on when I drive by there at night.
Horrible. So, I had talked to Greg, and I appealed, Greg Miller being the superintendent, and I appealed to him just as a, as a good neighbor. We don't have any rules in place. And so, they have experimented. They put hoods on, I think, two of the lights, and they were going to see how that helped before they did the rest of the lights. Those poor people across the street, you know, I mean, they had blackout shades, and I mean, just ridiculous.
It's horrible.
So, I don't think we do have anything in place, and I really think we probably should. Because that's why I was asking Mike Fitzgerald as, as a, as a good neighbor to keep the light spill over down. And, and the school, if that doesn't work, then they're going to construct or create something that will hood those lights because it's unacceptable.
I thought, Tammy, this is...
Because they had some damage. They had some vandalism on the, on the playground equipment. I mean, I understand why they're doing it, but it doesn't mean you have to, you know, send out a light signal out into outer space.
I'm not sure if Joe is talking, but I know he sees on mute.
No, I was just, I was listening. Yeah, disagreeing as to usually, a lot of times the blinders help, but I mean, as I'm looking, I don't see anything indicating any sort of light, you know, ordinance or anything at the top of my head as I'm reading through stuff.
Do other, do other boroughs have such things?
Some do. They have basically the maximum lumens that you're allowed, or basically the, what is it, the, the floodlight basically flowing into other areas, you know, your neighboring properties. You have to have so many, you know, torchlight or candle foot to be allowed.
Can you give us a sample ordinance on, and we can address that?
Yeah, I can, I can look one up and find one for you.
A lot of times, a lot of times, you'll, you'll see that stuff in a zoning ordinance. And I had the zoning ordinance out because of our hearing, but I don't see anything in there. I just kind of scanned it, but there's definitions for foot candle. There's a definition for glare, but I didn't see any regular definitions specifically of lights.
Tammy, this is Suzanne. I seem to remember in the back of my mind that some Borough Council meeting many, many, many moons ago, someone else had a light, and I don't know if it was...
It was on the parking lot going into Richmond Music. His name, I just forgot. But yes, they had asked him, we hooded those lights or redirected them on the...
Right. We hooded them. Right, okay. But maybe we didn't have an ordinance at the time to deal with it, so we just undertook to fix it. I remember.
So far, we just appealed to people as a good neighbor, and we did the same thing. We were being a good neighbor to the people at Richmond Music. But, no, we should have something in there because, you know, it's, it really infringes on neighborhood properties if not done correctly.
So, I have a note that, as you recall, in December, we talked about there's, we're doing the recodification and a potential zoning with a few tweaks in the zoning. So, we'll put this on that list of things to be addressed in the zoning ordinance.
Cooper. Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
Excellent.
Yeah, I just came through on, Coopersburg is one that has a lighting ordinance, and I can send that to Chris. I'll scan it to him and send it to him so he can have you look at that, because it's a little bit in-depth, so I'm not going to read it all. I'm trying to skim it to see what exactly it says.
Yeah. Well, while we're discussing that, not just the ordinance, but between you and other resources you have at BIA, making a recommendation would be great.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
As I said, there's nothing in our ordinance. I just found something in the section called Parking Regulations that, oh, no, it's in some separate section. It's called Lighting in section 706.2, and it says, "Lighting for buildings, accessway, and parking areas shall be so arranged as to not reflect toward public streets or cause any annoyance to building occupants or surrounding property owners or residents." So, page 107 of our zoning ordinance.
I'll, I'll copy that and send it out. Little generic, but still start.
It's a lot generic.
Doesn't really give a lot of direction as to what people need to do or how we can effectuate some change. Okay. Well, we're looking forward to getting that recommendation from our, our team, our engineering team. Can we move on with Arrow and the Water Main project bid, please?
Actually, actually, Ryan is here, so we can, we can jump back into the original engineer's report from BIA.
Okay, Ryan, welcome aboard if you're ready to go.
You guys hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. So, I appreciate you guys letting me jump on a little late. I had to go to a township meeting in person, and I just got home, so I jumped on with you guys. Okay, the first item on my engineer's report, as always, is the Borough MS4 and the Pollution Reduction Plan items. On the fourth of this month, we did receive an acceptance letter from DEP for your annual report that covered June of 2019 to this past June of 2020. We will coordinate with the borough to complete any inventory list items that are needed to help with water pollution, and then that will satisfy DEP's MPDES permit. Second item under MS4 is the Willow Creek Restoration Project. We did send a copy of the design plan to DEP and their liaison, William Severz, for a pre-application review. We sent that out last week. and their liaison, William Severz, for a pre-application review. We sent that out last week. This review is basically just kind of a, almost like a sketch plan type of review to help us deal with anything prior to a full design. This is also intended to help expedite the official plan submission once we apply for construction permits.
Ryan, Suzanne, if I can just interrupt you just a second. Going back, the MS4 annual report for the DEP, I thought one of the things that we did for them was provide information in our newsletter, but with COVID, we did not issue the newsletter. So we may be behind on a couple of those publications. So perhaps we can work with Chris to get them, to get them out in some way. We don't even do the billing in-house anymore in terms of our water billing and things. So we may have to come up with a creative solution to that.
Yeah, yeah. Christine Milner, who's our MS4 coordinator, I'll have her, she, I know she's coordinating with Chris constantly on other items. Chris, can you confirm if you have anything posted to the website or any of your social media for the borough?
Just had to step away for just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, that's one other thing you can do, Suzanne, in place of an actual physical mailer, is your website, social media, anything of that nature. So Christine.
Sure, we can, we can work on that, but I just want to bring it forward before, even before we miss out on opportunity, because I think those things are, are tallied, how many of those things that you do, to want to make sure that we meet the requirements for the year.
Yep, understood.
Suzanne, this is Craig. This is Craig. We did meet requirements for the, the last permit from June 19 to June 20. I, I did a actual setup, a table at the First Street Fair, which was a community outreach type thing that qualifies. So we did have enough for this time around. It would be from June 2020 to June 21 that we'd need to focus on currently.
Okay, thank you, Craig. We'll get a jump on that to ensure that we're in good shape.
Okay. All right, the next item under MS4 is the Berks County MS4 Steering Committee meeting. That next meeting is scheduled for January 21 and a couple of weeks from now. And then the other item under MS4 is the Flood Plane Vegetation and Management. We have not done any additional items at this time. Christine, who I mentioned earlier, she'll be coordinating with Craig and Chris as needed, moving forward into the spring, once maintenance season comes. In the second item, each month, you know, I keep on here, the Water Treatment Plant Stream Realignment. We issued that proposal last winter, so we're just on hold until we hear something from the borough. And then the third item is the Arch Street Project, which we've started. Our surveyors finished their work at the end of December and got us the base plan in hand with two engineers that are taking a look at the additional drainage issues and feasibility options for how to manage stormwater in that area. And that's the final item on the engineer's report. If anybody from council or anybody else has any questions for me, now, now would be a good time to address that.
This is, this is Denton Schucker. I have a question for you. You said the sewer treatment plant, stream realignment?
It was actually the water treatment plant up on top of the mountain.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood then. Sorry, thank you.
Maybe Denton, maybe I misspoke and said wastewater. I meant the water treatment facility at the top of the mountain.
Thank you.
Ryan, I talked to, it's Pete.
Yep.
Craig and I talked about that realignment job multiple times, and I guess we're going to get together with the committee, but my opinion is you can take that off. We're going to figure something else out up there. We can't afford to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on that right now.
Understood.
I think.
It wasn't going to be a cheap project. Understood.
I think we're just going to patch up what we have there that's hazardous and, and move on.
Okay, understood.
Does anybody else have anything for Ryan at this time? Okay, Ryan, looks like you're good to go then, sir.
Okay, thanks Suzanne. And if anything comes up, just have Chris or anybody, any of you reach out to me tomorrow or later, later in the week if needed.
Absolutely, we'll do that. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thanks, bro.
Okay, going back to our agenda, then that brings us back to Arrow. And I don't know if it's Doug Cop is going to be presenting the water main project bid?
Yes. Yeah, we received, sorry, I thought I heard someone. We received nine bids last week. The apparent low bid was for $1,737,000, $37.05 with, from Anrich Incorporated. Their bid minus a couple of minor documents was, you know, complete and in line. We, with concurrence with Andy, would recommend approving the, the bid and awarding the project to Anrich Incorporated.
That was Anderson Incorporated, you said?
Anrich.
Anrich, oh, okay.
Sorry, I misspoke.
Nope, it's just my ears. I'm old.
Or council, the, the, all nine bids were in the email sent out, if anybody's looking for the entire.
Thank you.
Yep.
Was there any question about the bid in terms of different items or anything like that? Anything, any concerns that have to be addressed?
No, there, this is Brad Smith. No, there was not.
Just to refresh everybody's.
Go ahead, Pete, I'm sorry.
Pete, just to refresh everybody's memory, the original estimate from Arrow was three and a half million dollars for this project. That included engineering fees, so if we award this at 1.7 million, we're going to have to add in engineering and some legal fees when we go to Penn Vest, but in any case, we're going to be way lower than 3.5 million.
So Ed or Doug, do you recall what the, if the low bid is 1.7 something, the rough project cost, didn't we come out to like 2.1?
Yeah, that's correct.
Does that include the legal fees for the Penn Vest loan?
No, that, that 2.1 was just construction.
And could we have our team from Arrow just quickly go over the, the parameters of the bid, the work that's going to be done, please?
Yes, there's several locations throughout the borough where we're going to be replacing the water main. We'll be placing water mains on Arch Street along with other streets within the borough. I think that there's eight locations throughout the borough that we're going to be replacing water mains, and it's to be spread out over a two-year period.
Does anybody else have any questions for Arrow at this time?
Well, it's Pete again. I'm not questioning, but we, we got a heck of a good price on this, and, you know, the, the high bidder here on these nine contractors was 2.7 million. The low bid is 1.7 million. And I've been looking at these things for 25 years, and you look at that and you go, my God, did they, were they looking at the same job? But, um, you know.
Hey Pete?
Yeah.
Is that over, Burger? Yeah, it, it's crazy, and as you know, the other bids were somewhat the same, but frankly, we're seeing that company why the market conditions right now. There's guys that are busy and guys that are scared of what's going to happen next year, because a lot of municipal budgets in particular, you know, a lot of folks know that they're, they've been cut, so some guys are just sharpening their pencil to make sure they can fill out next year, because they're, they see the light at the end of the, or darkness, I should say, at the end of the tunnel. So it's not just with road projects, with the number of the, of the municipal bid projects we're seeing. We're seeing numbers all over the place, because you're 2.7 million and, you know, with our original estimate, you know, we were working off what we were seeing, the, the numbers coming in, you know, 12 months ago. It's changed that month, much in just one year. So I agree with you. It's, it's kind of crazy right now.
So are you saying that with our new administration coming along, that that's why people are scared?
No, it's due, it's due to the loss of revenue of COVID that, you know, a number of municipalities know that, you know, I mean, look, liquid fuels is getting cut, and we know it's going to get cut more next year. You know, as well as revenue, particularly in those municipalities that are heavy with the business district that, you know, have a bunch of restaurants and their restaurant workers aren't paying, you know, don't have their per capita now.
Oh, I get it. I get it.
Yep. So it's just, it's just a reduction in revenue, and the municipalities in particular, they're just, they just don't know what kind of potential dip they're going to see. It's just, it's hard to look through that crystal ball. And things have been growing every year for so many years. This is really the first, you know, dip in potential revenue that they might see. So they're just, just kind of playing their cards close to their chest at the moment.
Well, we got, we got a heck of a deal on this. And like I say, if you add everything up, including everything, we're going to be way lower than 3.5 million.
Well, we just quadrupled our engineering fee, so that might, no, I'm just kidding.
I have a penciled in engineering fee, but I wasn't going to say it, because like I say, you just said you'll probably multiply times two or three.
But, but no, I mean, and, and, and frankly, you guys, that's the beauty of the Penn Vest loan that you took out, is that, you know, there is no penalty for using, using less money. And yeah, and again, we're still, we're going to still keep our nose to the grindstone to see if any other grant opportunities come up. I kind of doubt it. I mean, that has gone dead nuts quiet at the state level. But we never know what's going to pop up, because again, with Penn Vest, you can still apply and be awarded a grant prior to making settlement at the end of the project, and that can be directly deducted from what you owe them. Oh, you, you could have a benefactor come in and say, hey, I'd like to give the borough a, you know, a million bucks toward this project, and, and again, that's all recognized by Penn Vest. So, you know, what you guys end up with in the end, in terms of the, you know, overall capital costs of this and cash flow on an annual basis is, you know, looking pretty good. Now, again, I think it's important too, that, you know, you might want to, we might want to put an extra eyeball for construction observation. I know Craig's planning on picking up a big piece of that, but, you know, again, given where we are, we, we should really be looking over the shoulders. Now, we have experience with this Andrick outfit, mostly southy here, down in Montgomery, Chester County, in that area, and, you know, they're a fair company and do a good job, so we're actually pretty pleased. Dorian, yeah?
Ed, hi. This is Colin Boyer. I have a question for you. Can you hear me? Okay, I, I think you just answered my question that I just had, because I don't know, I've never heard of this company before, and I've never heard of them. So I did a quick Google, Google search on them, and what I found in the five-second search is not very, very good, as far as I know. They were in the recent past, not too recent, but in 2015, they were fined by USHA for unsafe working conditions, and there's nothing but complaints from this company, mostly from residents about unsatisfactory repatement of, of the roadway. So I just want to ask you to, to just explain.
I mean, not unlike what we did for, you know, Main Street and so forth, where we have a
in order for them to.
Resident project representative on site to make sure that they're building everything to spec. I made, I'm not trying to justify any complaints against them, but quite often in these kind of projects, what happens is, is if you do a water main project and you patch the road, it's generally a rough patch. It's rough for a little while until, under a separate contract or the borough or municipality decides to do it themselves, that they're going to do the finish, the finished top on the road. Because in a project like this, you're digging a, a narrow trench down the middle of the road, and then you're patching that in, and then sometimes separately. And I know, you know, you guys are thinking of doing this, I'll let Craig jump in, but this project does not include curb-to-curb paving. They generally don't. That's going to happen after the fact, and we talk project completion and doing curb-to-curb paving sometimes when those complaints pop up. But again.
Colin.
Between us and Craig and the team, I will keep a close eye on it.
Colin, just for FYI, in the contract, we do have a pretty tight trench paving spec in there, similar to what we did out on Locust Street. Hoping for, you know, a good result, and we're going to, we're going to hold them to that standard that we have in the contract.
So Craig, you're comfortable working with them and, and?
Yeah, I've never worked with this company. I have heard about them. I've never worked with them, but, yeah, I mean, they're qualified. The engineer's comfortable with them. I, I see no reason not to go forward.
Okay.
This is John Robner. Can I make a motion that we accept the bid from Edison?
Yes. Can we have a second, please?
It's Pete. I'll second it.
Do we have any further discussion? Okay, then, Dorian, if you wouldn't mind taking the role for the, for the voting, please. Okay, Suzanne Touch? Agreed, yes. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone, Suzanne. Okay, that motion carries with one, with one dissent. Okay, moving forward from there, do we have anything else for Arrow at this time? Chris?
No, but thank you for reappointing us. We really appreciate it, and have a good night.
Night.
Yeah, if I might say this, real quick, I appreciate the, really appreciate the reappointment. I know we've got some new faces, which has been a lot of fun, and, you know, we do enjoy, you know, working with, you know, Greg, Chris and the whole team over there. So we appreciate that, and, and kudos to Andy, you know, he's been very helpful through this process, you know, with one of your larger projects you've ever done in the borough. And having his oversight's been very helpful as well, so thanks, Andy, for that.
Thank you, Ed.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Happy New Year to you.
Okay, moving forward now, we're down to subsection five. I think we're going back to Andy George, if he's available to talk about the.
Yeah, Suzanne, just the guest number four.
Oh, I apologize. You can open up the phone lines, Chris, please, to any guests that are available. I know that Denton is available or still, or was.
I believe he's our only non-council person.
Okay. Denton, do you have anything that you wanted to bring forward, or are you just checking what's going on?
This is Denton. I'm just checking in and, and following through with this for some time now, and I, I guess congratulations have to be put out on a bid that's 50% of the projected cost. Wow, unbelievable. But, yeah. No, that's all. I'm, I'm just listening in and we saw the same thing down at, at the Vine Street project. It was estimated considerably more than, than what we're going to wind up paying, but it, it tends to go that construction is probably down with the economy, so there's one benefit of, of being in a semi-recession. That's all I have to say. I'm going to continue to listen in on you by now.
All right. Thank you, Denton. Okay, now we're going to move back to, to Andy George with the police, the contract for Richmond, Topton, Ruska Manor for approval.
Okay, so the Ruska Manor contract was signed by Ruska Manor Township. So that one is, is completed. No, no issues there. With Topton, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that we have yet assigned contract, but.
No, let me, uh, uh, that's true. I just got this afternoon Ruska Manor signed back for our signature. So we could, we could, uh, if we didn't already, I don't recall if we want to approve that for signature. And as well, Topten's for when it comes back to the council to sign it because they should be signing that tonight as well, the feedback I got.
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate any issues with, with Topten. I think that will be signed tonight. Uh, same goes for Richmond. There were, they had a, just a question that we addressed today. They meet tonight also and I don't anticipate any issues with that one either. I think we can vote. If we didn't already, I, I think we can vote to.
Excuse me, it's Doreen. I'm looking at the minutes from last month. And I have a note to, there was a motion to adopt the three municipal police contracts. And resolutions for Richmond, Topten and Ruska Manor.
Great.
And it was also authorizing, uh, Suzanne Touch to sign those resolutions and contracts.
Okay.
Perfect. Nice job, Doreen.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right. So then the other, the other thing on, on the agenda is records disposal. We have a, a resolution for tonight. Based on the municipal records manual. And this is something that we do every year and this was, uh, initiated by CAP. We have some records from 2013 that have reached their expiration date. So we can kind of. Clean up the office and free up some space. Things like insurance claims and policies, liquid fuels, tax records. I don't want to read them all, but. Treasurers reports, accounts payable, ledgers and things like that. They're up for, they're up for destruction.
And again, everybody has a copy of that, uh, email to them earlier.
So do we need a motion to approve that?
We do.
I'll make that motion, please.
So I have a motion by Mr. Touch. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, did someone make a second?
Yeah, Jimmy Meals did.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Touch and a second by Mr. Meals of direct, record disposal. Do I have any further discussion? We have no further discussion. Then, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll, please. Is he on Touch? Agreed. Yes. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yeah.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone. Okay, that motion carries then. And that's all you had, right, Andy?
That is correct.
Okay, then we move on to the manager's report with Chris Young, please.
Thank you, Suzanne. Uh, I'm, I'm on, hello?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I had some audio problems earlier. Um, so thank you, Suzanne. The, the budget re-up, uh, update. Is, uh, I'll be emailing that out by the end of this week. There were some issues that we had to get resolved. Uh, prior to doing the final on December 31st and, uh. It's now complete, but I now have to go in and do my typical budget update. So you'll have that by the end of the week. Uh, VPR, if you recall, is the vacant property, uh, ordinance that we enacted. Ralph, that was like five years ago, if not longer.
Right.
Um, our, our current VPR people, uh, we dismissed, actually even prior to me. Or prior to the manager's position being opened and we had agreed to at the time, try to manage it ourselves. Uh, because the previous, uh, VPR was not very well, uh, received at all. Ralph, you agree?
Yeah, very much so.
Since then, there's a, uh, a relatively new, uh, company. They're only in business for about two years. I found them during a, uh, a session that was being held and I, I was, it intrigued me, so I made contact with them. Uh, they pretty much will do the same thing, uh, that this other company was doing. That they would track any foreclosures, uh, any vacant properties, et cetera, et cetera. That come notify us. They have a database that would be started. The, what we're finding is that we still, as a borough, still don't know when people go to foreclosure. So we have the ordinance and they're supposed to be notified, but there's, there's a big difference between notifying and going out and knocking on somebody's door. Literally or figuratively saying, hey, this ordinance is in effect. We need the contact information. I'm recommending to council that we take on this new, uh, VPR firm. The, the, there would be no cost to the borough whatsoever. Uh, as a matter of fact, it would be. $200 assessed to the, the, the loan agency who keeps it vacant. $100 comes to the borough, $100 goes to the VPR firm. Uh, and the, the, the firm is called Munisi Reg. So I think it's, it's fairly, if not completely harmless at this point. There's no cost to the borough. Uh, we can try to reengage and get our vacant properties under control. And if it doesn't work out, we drop them as well.
Chris, do we have any recommendations from anybody else around the area that uses them?
Uh, talking to the, this firm, there's, uh, I think Scranton might use them. They're, they're relatively new, so there's not a lot of recommendations because one of the things I did ask for, we're getting plenty of recommendations and not using the other one. And from, from what, uh, I found out, there's only about three firms that exist that do this. It's a very niche market.
Is that a PSAB recommended, uh, recommended? You know what I mean? Recommended firm?
I, I did not check with PSAB. If you could, Tammy, that would be great.
I will do that.
Chris, can you explain why there, there's no charge for this?
They, because the, the mortgage companies or the banks, um, pay the fee. And they get their money from the fee registration. So that's why there's no charge to the borough.
But how, how does the fee get assessed to somebody?
So what, what this firm does is they keep track of foreclosures and things like that. And then they reach out to the banks. Or mortgage companies or whoever might have the, the property. And say, based upon Fleetwood's ordinance, you need to register. Please send $200 to the borough to register. We get it. And then we forward $100 to them.
And John, we already have the ordinance in place.
Okay.
So we've already got the process set up to, to bill people to participate. We just, in the past, had a group that wasn't actually doing anything when they got the information.
Okay.
They were very difficult to work with.
I didn't, I didn't realize there was something in place.
Uh, the, the ordinance might have to be slightly tweaked. He, I sent his recommendate, our ordinance to him. Uh, and I have to send it now, his recommendation to Andy. Because apparently some of the verbiage over the last two or three years has been highlighted by the courts not to be, uh, in, in the ordinance. Uh, particularly, I think in our ordinance, we say something to the effect of if a person is late in their payment. And it, it should not be that way. It should only be on a foreclosure at this point. So it's, it's just some tweaks that might have to be done and we can actually take care of that in the codification part of it.
And how do you spell the name of the company that you're proposing?
M U N C I.
Yeah.
R E G.
M U N I C I?
Hang on, let me get my paper. Yeah, so it's M U N I, you know, N, R E G. That's municipal registration.
M U N I C I R E G, one word.
Oh, no, M U N I R E G.
Okay.
That was my, my error. I'm trying to look it up now to make sure that there's no, that I didn't write it down wrong.
The Munireg, is that using?
Yep. And I, I just looked it up. That is, it's M, correct. It's M U N I R E G, V P R O for vacant property registration. The gentleman's name is Michael Halpern. He used to be with a, uh. A firm that did the, for the banks, the vacant properties. And he realized there was an opportunity here to do something better than the other one was doing. Uh, which I told him he didn't have a very big, uh. The pole of the climb was pretty small on that one.
So do we need a motion for this or is this a, uh, you want to wait until you can do a bit of information back or?
If, if we're gonna, if we're gonna engage, I would suggest a motion that allows it based, based upon. Uh, or as, as long as, uh, we don't find any additional, uh, negative information. If Tammy comes back with PSAB. Or something that says negative, uh, we could do it that way. Right, Andy?
We can do it that way for sure, yeah.
So then, can I have a motion to utilize this new organization called Munireg? To deal with our vacant property registration. Pending any information, uh, that we receive from Andy or. Mayor Gore about, uh, any issues with their use. This will allow Chris to investigate and provide further information about it.
This is Ralph. I'll make the motion.
Looks like Ralph to Pete, but I think I'll take your second if you'll give it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, then I have a motion and a second by Mr., uh, a motion by Mr. Touch and a second by Mr. Merkel. Any further discussion? Okay, then, Doreen, if you'd be so kind as to call the roll, please. Good. Suzanne Touch? Agreed, yes. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries then. Not your John. Sorry, excuse me, Suzanne. Did John reply?
He did.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. That motion carries then with one objection. Moving forward, Chris, go ahead.
Okay, the personnel update is, um, Lori Barber here at the borough as our clerk, our, um, water type person. Is that Lori is leaving for a full-time position, unfortunately. So just FYI to everybody, but we are also at this point, um, working within the office and I want to work with the personnel team. On a replacement strategy. So I'm not at this point asking for a replacement yet. I think we, we'll, we'll have some ideas in the next month to propose to council. So that's just an FYI. And then upcoming, we have, uh, a subdivision that's being, uh, that's currently with our planning commission. That is at the end of Vine Street, uh, with, uh, Pete, help me out. What's your name?
Janet Peters.
Thank you. Janet Peters, um, is looking at taking some of her land and I think assigning it to a, another neighbor. Uh, in that area. So that will be at the next council meeting, likely at the next council meeting. And man, I, I just saw another typo in here. I, I should not be doing these things so quickly on a Friday. And then the other one is, we do have a meeting this Thursday on a Penn Vest meeting. Based upon the bids that were just open. So I'll have more information on that, uh, on February meeting as well.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
That's all I got.
Okay, moving on to Craig Conrad on the public works report.
Um, Chris sent my report out with the package. Um, hope everybody had a chance to read that. Um, I did give a shout out to a couple of employees that stepped up, uh, big time over the last month. And kudos to them. I mean, we, our whole team always steps up, but, uh, we had an extremely taxing month and, uh. Some of these guys, you know, helped out, stepped up even, uh, extra special this time. So I just wanted to give a couple of kudos out there. The Vine Street lift station, as I had been reporting, and we have a authority meeting next week, also be reporting there as well. It's just about wrapped up. There's just a few odds and ends, uh, hanging out there on the electrical end of things to finish up. We did receive first pay application, which I forwarded on to Dennis Werner from the authority. And I'm sure they will be addressing that at their meeting next week. Um, the traffic light issue Pete brought up, um. Penn dot notified me that we were going to put this thing into service. It's been up now, as most of you know, it's been in place there for probably three years. Um, so in one way it was, you know, it was nice to see it function because, you know, they spent, I spent the money there to install this thing. Norfolk Southern spent again as much money putting in all new, uh, rail crossings and, and. You know, gadgets to hook up to this light to make everything work. So, you know, on one hand, it was good to see it working and functioning in the borough like it was meant to do. Um, I was out the day it went into service with, uh, Adam Stettler from Penn Dot. Who is the, uh, second in line in charge of the traffic lights and he sets up all the timing and those sort of things. Um, he was out there. He watched it cycle. Um, he thought it was doing what Penn Dot had wanted it to do and it was working properly. Um. After that initial startup, you know, it's, it's a newness of everything and seeing something when you're driving into town that you never saw before. And also, you know, concerns and legitimate concerns. So Chris and I discussed it. We talked to Adam Stettler and Chris Sarovy from Penn Dot. And they had come, gave us the authorization to do some other timing changes. Telco came out, um, almost immediately, put those changes into effect. Um, did, did some other things for us to try to, to lessen the pain and, uh. Although it might not be ideal for everyone, I think it's, you know, the safety was the main factor. They're trying to keep cars off of the railroad, trying to keep traffic in the first block. From Locust Street to Main Street, from backing up to a point where, you know, they don't have anywhere to go and they're sitting on the track. So I think. Other than the first day or two, I do think that it's, it's doing what it's supposed to do. But I also understand a lot of the concern. So, you know, we are still working actively with Penn Dot. So if there's any complaints or any changes that you might, you guys might want to see or ask if are possible, those kind of things we could incorporate. We certainly can work with them. They've been more than willing to talk with us and, and try to work with us.
Greg? You know, I'll, I'll step in and forward there. Um, I had a very lengthy conversation with, uh, Adam and Penn Dot on that Monday. And some, uh, rapid follow-ups. Uh, we often malign Penn Dot. Uh, not we as a borough, but in general, it's looked at as, uh, you know, big state organization. It doesn't do, uh, isn't very cooperative or isn't very responsive. Just the opposite here. So, uh, and I, I sent a letter to Adam's supervisor saying the same. That, uh, they were very responsive and within hours, they had a new, a new, uh. Program for the lights. They had forwarded that to Telco. Telco had contacted Craig. They were out within the next day. It was very, very quick response. So it was very impressive, actually.
So Greg, I know we changed the lighting or the timing for the lights between the two lights and the synchronization for those. Have, have there been any major hiccups during the shift changes out at East Penn? Or any other times that have made it worse than what it was? Or has that timing change been beneficial? Or has nobody said anything either way?
Um, it's, you know, I, I think no matter what we do, John, you know, when the shifting comes, comes at Decca. When those times come and we get all that traffic, I don't know that there's anything that's gonna make that better. I mean, that traffic has to get through town. And it does still back up at those times, but it does also clear out. In a relatively fast manner. I mean, Pete may have a different suggestion because he's sitting there in his office and he sees it all day long where I just see it. You know, when I have the time to drive out and take a look at it, but, uh. I, I think the, the timing on the rest of the lights at Franklin and down at Main, I think that has improved with this new setup. Um, so, you know, if you're driving there on a slow part of, of the night, say you're coming through town in the middle of the night. You could have sat there at the Franklin Street light for quite a long time and not seen another car. That has changed. Now you'll get through rather quickly. So. You know, as far as your question, has, has it alleviated the Decca congestion? I, I don't know that there's anything we can do to totally alleviate that. I don't think it's any worse.
Yeah, so my concern, Greg, was that we made the, made it worse by. Yeah. So my concern, Greg, was that we made the, made it worse by changing the timing. If we haven't, that's a good thing.
I haven't gotten any complaints to that fact and I, I don't believe we have, but again, I'm only one person and I'm not out there every single shift change of every day.
And, and so that second day, I think I had texted you and Chris. Um, that certainly was much better going from a two-minute wait down to just over a one-minute wait to get out of, get off of Richmond Street.
Yeah, two minutes is a long time when you're sitting there.
Really, really long time. Um, and you know, one of the concerns I had, and there's several people that live on the south side of the Main Street that uh, use Richmond Street to get to the fire company for fire calls. We use two minutes for a traffic light and, and we as a first responder cannot run a red light.
Right.
Two minutes is a lot of time waiting to, just to get through the light to get to a fire call or.
It sure is. It sure is.
So cutting it in half is, is a big deal.
I mean, and again, if anybody sees anything or has any suggestions, you know, the door's still open with Penn Dot. I don't see any reason why we couldn't say, hey, you know, can we do this or can we do that? Sometimes they'll tell us, hey, that's not possible with the program and sometimes they'll work with us. And like, you know, like Chris said, this has been, you know, an outstanding effort on their part and uh, you know, do we have it exactly where it needs to be? I'm not 100% sure. It's, it's a new thing and I think we've definitely improved it with the changes that we did make. Um, maybe it's just a matter of time getting used to it, or maybe there's a few things we can, you know, that we haven't really noticed yet. We're going to keep our eye on it and if we see something that we could improve, we're certainly going to try to do that.
Yeah. So, so I want to just say thank you because I, I, I think that's a, the, the work you guys did was a big improvement. From, from my standpoint. Um, second thing I wanted to mention, you already touched on was uh, the, the public works guys. Really, really did step up and uh, covered our, our, our butts with water and sewer side um, and the rest of the borough. And I want to express my appreciation for that as well. Um, you guys got hit pretty hard with the, with things a few weeks back and uh.
It sure did.
So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, does everybody know what happened with the working guys?
No, but it may not be appropriate to, to share right now.
You, you can't, you can't even say that out of six guys, there was only two people working because of COVID? You can't say that?
Well, I think we might have just said it.
You just did, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think at least you could say that and you could, at least you could say, you know, thank you to the two guys that, well, it's, you know, it wasn't anybody's fault that they got recovered or were involved in it. But it, it was a, we, it really woke me up to the fact that we better have a plan. What if they were all out with COVID? What's our plan? We don't have a plan.
We have engineers and our licensed operators and we have some uh, some neighbor operators that are ready to step in and help us out.
We have that written down somewhere, right?
Uh, I don't know if we have a policy written down, but we do have them on standby and, and uh, the engineer, I'm just part of their work.
Well, it would, it, it was to me, it was, and I, you and I talked about it.
Yeah.
We, we, we need to, we need to have a plan for the worst.
Well, we discussed this at a county meeting, Pete, um, several, you know, when the first round of COVID came through and everyone, you know, on the county, on the county level, municipalities that attended that meeting, you know, which I believe it might've been at a burps, water and sewer meeting. But uh, you know, we all exchanged information and who can help who and you know, it's probably written down somewhere in, in those minutes of that meeting, but as far as uh, our, ourselves, you know, I think that's something that Chris and I need to work on, you know, and this situation is something brand new for all of us. So we're
Oh, yeah.
Learning. We're still learning, you know? You know, what, what if?
I will, I will give some credit out to uh, to Craig back in March when we first learned of the whole COVID potential. Um, Craig and I did sit down with the exact scenario that occurred. Um, whether it occurred or not is I guess debatable, but anyway, the uh, Craig stepped up by far, uh, was able to do quite a bit to, to help. Um, and we did have the engineering. I made contact with, with surrounding municipalities in, in tandem. And we had it covered should we had it needed. So, and likewise, a couple of weeks before, uh, the office was in a situation where uh, the entire office staff rose to the occasion. And it uh, it's unbelievable that we had to go through all these steps and iterations, but we did. And uh, we're, here we are today.
And actually Pete, if you, if you really think about it, we do have, you know, working agreements with Richmond and we have working agreements with uh, Maiden Creek now. And that was one discussion, uh, when I talked to Main Creek's manager, you know, that, you know, hey, we have people available for you and they have people available for us too, you know, in the water and sewer field. So, you know, I would say we do have a written policy in the form of an intermunicipal agreement.
Well, that's all well and good, but we need to talk about it at our next sewer and water meeting. What if you were in the hospital on a ventilator and you couldn't talk? You know, we, we, I wouldn't know who to call.
Well, we do have SOPs developed for down at the plant, which um, our new employee, Matt Irving actually relied on pretty heavily. So that was very helpful and that's one thing that uh, you know, we have been trying to work on and, and we're, you know, we're getting there.
Okay, thanks.
And I mean, that's all I have unless someone else has any other questions.
And Craig and uh, Chris, of course, we all um, are so grateful to both teams, the, the office team and the uh, street, the uh, the borough team for doing everything within their power to keep everything going, just as you, business as usual, regardless of how, you know, difficult it was. And of course, our thoughts and everything are with anybody who's still struggling with their family or has anybody who's been affected by the, the COVID uh, threat.
Can you guys know this already, but I'm just passing along just that, you know, it's nice to hear every once in a while, but you, on both sides of the fence here, on, in your office staff and your team in there and in your public works team. You know, you got people that care working for you and that, that means a lot in times like this. Everybody is, takes, takes pride in their work. Everybody wants to make it work. And we all come together to get it done. And I, you know, Chris and I have worked together on some of this stuff and we've been able to, to keep all moving along.
Well, we really appreciate that. We really do because uh, couldn't happen if it wasn't for you guys.
I'll tell you what, the new fellow, Matt. Now this poor guy had only been at the wastewater plant for a week. And he was alone.
He ended up being alone for a little while.
Talking, talking on the phone with Craig when he got a problem. This, this, this guy needs some kudos too.
Yep, I agree. I agree. And he's doing quite well. We, you know, we have reset now that we're all back. We've reset that and restarted the training and, and he, you know, he's, he's doing good. He, he actually said, you know, he learned quite a bit. And I'm sure he did. So, and he did well. He held things together, you know, for us, any, any issues he had, I was able to talk him through and uh, you know, that's what I said. It's all about it, you know, we all care and you know, that makes, that makes a big difference when the people that are working for you care about what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Craig, for everything. Moving on, we're on to John Rothenberger for approval for the bills.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to pay the bills for this one.
Do I have a second, please?
That's Ralph. I'll second it.
Do we have any further discussion? Then Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, could you please call the roll?
Suzanne Touch?
Agreed, yeah. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Certainly.
That's okay. That motion carries. Thank you, John.
All right. I'd like to make another motion to uh, ratify the bills that were paid in December. Um, Chris, I'm not sure of the date. I think it was the 28th or was it Friday the 20th?
That's, that's why I kept it generic, John, because the, the bills, as you remember from the last meeting, were delayed. So it turned out to be uh,
It was 29th when I signed them off. So they were ready, I believe, on the 28th.
Correct. And then the prior ones, which was at council meeting, were done later that week, which would have been like the 18th.
Is that a separate item?
Well, I have it as December. If it's okay with council, just will ratify the December bills. That takes care of both of them.
Andy, can we cover ratifying, ratifying both of those in one motion? Or do you, would you see, prefer to see them separately?
I, I, I would go with those separately, John, just in case.
Okay. So, so let's do the one with the, the ones that were, I believe dated the 28th of December.
So John, you're making a motion to ratify the dissent, the bills up to December 28th? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the bills that were, were identified on December 28th.
Okay. And do I have a second then?
This is Ralph. I'll second it.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to ratify the bills identified on December 28th. Do um, we have any further discussion on this? Okay. Then if, Doreen, if you would do the honors and call the roll. I'm sorry, did someone have a question? Sure, Colin, go ahead.
That's the next one.
Okay. No further discussion. And Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll for those this ratification of the, those, those bills identified on December 28th.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Agreed, yeah.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Mark Watkins is here now to apologize. I had a work crisis to deal with, but yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, that motion carries. John, do you have another motion for additional bill?
I do. Chris, are we going to use the Friday, the 11th or Monday, the 14th date for the others?
No, no, it would be Friday, the 18th.
Friday, the 18th?
Because it's after council meeting.
Your council meeting was the 14th?
Correct.
It was, okay. All right. So let's go with the ratification of those for the 18th of December.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Rothenberger to ratify the bills identified on the 18th of December. Do I have a second, please?
That's Ralph. I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Colin, did you have a question? This was regarding the, the extra security that we put in place on the website? Is that what I'm hearing?
So I'll, Colin had contacted me, I'll go for an explanation, contacted me about the website and some of the uh, issues that uh, he was thinking might had a uh, would be an issue. I contacted Sheila. Uh, Sheila indicated that the website indeed was not HTTPS S, which was the secure website because she did what we had asked and, and continued our previous website. Our previous website was also not secure. So when I asked her if we could make it secure, she said it absolutely. And that's the charges you're seeing. If you want further explanation, I can go into it further.
How much was the, how much was the extra charge?
I'd have to go back and look at the invoices, Pete. I don't recall.
Ballpark.
Thousand dollars?
And her initial bill was like 5,000 or something, right?
Again, I, I'm drawing a blank on, on everything that we had done, but I think that is correct. Part of that was the, the fees that we had to pay to get a certificate. That's not free either.
We did not ask for that upfront, correct?
Correct.
Chris, am I understanding it correctly that when we realized that we did not have the security protocols or higher security protocols that were available that we undertook to get them? Is that, was that how the additional billing came upon, came about?
Correct. So our, our website, if, if you go onto a banking website, it's always secure, the HTTPS type uh, security. Our website was just a normal HTTP uh, because it's a one-way. People are just getting information from it. So we never had it secured. Ha, having it secured is not a bad thing. Having it secured is not a bad thing. And when I did some research on other municipalities, some of them have it, some of them don't. It, it was definitely something that can't hurt. So we engaged with her to increase the security. But it was, she was duplicating what we had prior, which is why it was not secure.
Okay. If we've got no further discussion on this, then um, John, I apologize. Did you say it was the December 18th bills?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and we have a motion and a second by Mr. Touch. Um, and we've had discussion. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask Doreen, please, to call the roll to ratify those bills.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Agreed, yeah.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? Okay. And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that would be everybody.
Okay. Then that motion carries. Anything else, John?
That is the start.
Okay, perfect. So then the next thing we need to move on to is to approve the December 2020 minutes. Do I have a motion for that? You've already been supplied the most, the meeting minutes in your emails.
It's Pete. I'll make the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Merkel. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Touch. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, then Doreen, if I'd ask you, please, to call the roll for the, for the vote.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yes, approved. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? Okay. And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
All right. That, that motion carries as well. Does anybody have any further um, business that they need to share at this time? We can go through the team.
I would love to, Suzanne.
Yeah, go ahead.
When I, when I did the checks the last time, the Maiden Creek agreement was still in the drawer unsigned by most people. Um, I don't know if anybody has gotten into signing it off or if everybody's gotten in to sign it off.
Um, I apologize. I had a little COVID issue recently, so I have not, I've been staying uh, kind of self-quarantining. But I should be out and about on Wednesday, so I can go in and sign it if it hasn't been signed already.
Yeah, well, I think. I'll send out a little reminder of who needs to sign what, so people can stop in and, and everybody will also need to sign this. As the police contracts come in, I'll also note that. So I'll give a reminder email a little bit later in the week to everybody who needs to. As the police contracts come in, I'll also note that. So I'll give a reminder email a little bit later in the week to everybody who needs to pop in.
Certainly. Sounds like a plan. Okay. So Pete, do you have anything?
You missed the last meeting because you had a sick dog. How's the dog doing?
Well, for reasons that I can't explain to you, we are fostering a dog right now. And she's doing much better and she is absolutely delicious. She's a little brown, chubby little poodle type dog and she looks like a little fur ball. She is adorable. So she's doing very well. Thank you for asking. It was a little bit touch and go there. She was pretty sick when we got her.
Oh, wow. Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll send pictures to everybody. Okay. So Pete, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. How about Jimmy Meals? You got anything for us you want to discuss?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Watkins?
I'm good. Sorry I was late.
No problem. We just have a small fine for that. Mr. Boyer, how about you? Happy New Year to you, sir. Mr. Meals?
I'm on.
Anything going on that you want to talk about?
Nope.
Mr. Touch?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Touch has nothing. Okay. How about Mayor Gore? Anything you need to discuss?
Not a thing.
Okay. And I think Andy's still on the line. Andy, you have anything you've realized that we missed that we need to talk about?
No, I, I'm all good, Suzanne, but thank you.
No problem. Well, then I think that's everybody, unless I've forgotten somebody. Craig, we already checked with you and I think you're good. Yeah? Craig may have dropped off. Okay.
I'm good. I was muted. I'm sorry. I'm good. Yeah.
No, 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 that's fine. Just wanted to make sure that if there was anything else you wanted to discuss, you had a little forum for that. That's all. Okay. Well, then I think we're at that point in the meeting that people love the most. I need a motion to.
Wait, 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 wait. Before we adjourn.
Go to you. I thought you already reported. Go ahead.
I did. I did. This is outside of that. After the meeting, if I could have the park team stay on for a little committee meeting, which for those who don't remember are Ralph, Mark and John. Very, very brief, but while I have you, sometimes it's tough to find you guys, if you don't mind staying on for a couple of minutes. And likewise, Jimmy Meals, can you give me a call sometime at your convenience?
Tomorrow or today or what?
No, whenever, whenever it's good for you. Whenever you feel like you need to chat. It's very minor. And, and the parks team, is that okay? Can you guys stay on for five minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then I still need a motion to adjourn. So which one of my council members will move forward?
John will make the motion to adjourn.
Why, thank you, John. I do appreciate it. And do I have a second, please?
It's Ralph. I'll second it.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to adjourn this evening. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, last roll of the night, please. Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Absolutely. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that motion carried. And then we are officially adjourned. Everybody have a safe and happy evening and we look forward to our next meeting together.